Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This meeting is being conducted in compliance with the Open Meetings Act. The Verona Board of Education passed a resolution at its meeting held on January 7th, 2014. The meeting set forth the schedule of its regular meetings, which resolution was within seven days of passage. The schedule was sent to the Verona City Grove Times, the Star Ledger, the Herald News, the Township of Verona, and the Verona Education Association. Postings of this meeting setting forth the time, location, and agenda were posted in each of Verona's six schools, the board office, and town hall. This posting was also sent to the above newspapers, all SCA presidents, and SCA liaisons. The Verona Board of Education operates under consent agenda format. Any board member has a right to have an item pulled to be voted upon or discussed separately. Copies of tonight's agenda and resolutions have been made available to the public present. Mr. Spardell?
Here.
Mr. Day?
Here.
Mr. Bellino?
Here.
Mr. Yunus?
Here.
Mr. Quachochi?
Here. Okay, welcome to our first meeting in November. We have two meetings this month. Before we get going, do we have any public comment or question on any agenda item? Okay, let's get into superintendent's report.
Good evening, everyone. Happy to announce the technology referendum work is underway. It began last Monday. We've had a lot of CAT 6 cabling that's been begun to be installed in Verona High School and HBW. We're actually three days ahead of schedule, and we're moving ahead very nicely on that project work. We, last night, on a separate note, had our hazing presentation that we've been talking about for several weeks. Andy Jaeger, who's a school psychologist, and he is also the student assistance counselor in Park Bridge Public Schools, did a presentation here for all of our coaches, and we had that presentation on hazing and talking about identifying risks and working with our students. The presentation by Mr. Jaeger went for approximately one hour, and then following that presentation, we had a discussion with myself, our school attorney, Michael Gross, and our athletic director, Mr. Freesian, as well as our high school administration and Mrs. Lustig, our high school SAC, our student assistant counselor, and we had a lot of good conversation with our coaches and answered a lot of questions. The next step in the phase of taking a look at what we're doing and making sure that we're being proactive in all of our measures to support our student athletes and to support all of our students, we are currently in the final process of revising our current existing student code of ethics contract, and we will be having our coaches turnkey that with our student athletes and also with our parents. Last week, we had a field committee meeting at the board office in order to update the stakeholders that participated in our field committee regarding the design plans and getting input from that committee back in the spring. We updated them in regards to what our current design plans are, and we also had an opportunity to hear additional feedback from those stakeholders. Some of the things that they recommended that we add to the bid process when we go out in January entail the inclusion of the concession structure as an alternate, also to include the upper field remediation as an alternate, to see if those would come back within the budget proposal, the bid proposal, in order to see if those would be possible and for the board to make a determination at that time in the new year. In addition to that, there would also be, as an alternate, the addition of new lights as replacement lights to the tennis courts that would directly impact the drop of the lighting directly on the court without spillage onto the parking lot and beyond. And we would also, just as a note, the Board of Education has determined that we will be including restroom facilities at the lower field as an alternate to the plan. If that also does not come back within the bid process, within the budget, then at that point, we would look to install restroom facilities in an existing structure at that lower field and do that through our operating budget with our in-house staff. So the board is committed to making the development of the restroom facilities there for the visitors at that lower field. Feedback that we also received from the field committee entailed exploring the height length of the field turf in order to accommodate the multipurpose field. You can have different heights, one inch, one and a quarter inch, one and a half inch. We did some research. We looked at other schools who utilize multipurpose fields. We are going to be moving ahead with a specification in the bid of a medium turf height. And last but not least, in right field on the field design plans, we currently have marked as a half of a regulation field or 50 yards. The recommendation from the committee was to try to extend those yardage markers that are permanently sewed into the turf as close to the right field infield as possible, so perhaps trying to extend that to making it 70 yards, which would in turn require less marking of that field with the paint in the off-season, in the fall season, in order to accommodate athletics. Recently, Child, the parent support group, children having individual learning differences, has run several very successful and well-turned-out presentations for parents on three different topics, on dyslexia, on autism, and on attention deficit hyperactive disorder. I encourage anyone interested in finding out more information to contact Norma Franculo or a member of Child. They can receive the contact information by visiting the Verona website under the community section, and we are momentarily going to be adding a link as well under our special services section on our website as well. I'd like to just acknowledge one of our teachers at Forest Avenue Elementary School for a really wonderful accolade. She was recently honored as Teacher of the Year by the Freemasons, Jean Sapienza at Forest Avenue Elementary School. One of our special education teachers was recognized and received a $1,000 grant that she in turn is utilizing to incorporate technology with her students in her classroom. So congratulations to Ms. Sapienza, a very accomplished teacher, and we're very, very appreciative of all of her dedication to our students. As many of you may know, you've heard some news about a recent vehicle accident in front of Verona High School. Fortunately, everyone is well, nobody got hurt, but nonetheless, there have been about five or six traffic incidents, many of them minor, however, around Verona High School. However, the issue is still raised with concern for student, for staff safety, for visitor safety around the high school with speeders on Fairview Avenue. I have contacted Mr. Martin, our township manager. We've had some discussions around having a traffic study done to explore the safety there. He is in conversations with Chief Huber, and they're going to be exploring to see if there are any remedial measures that they can take to improve the overall safety of the area. On October 28th, we had the first in a series of parent outreach sessions. It was at FN Brown School. It was literacy night for elementary parents throughout the entire district. We had a really great turnout. I believe we had over 200 parents who showed up, and the focus of that evening was really to help parents understand literacy for their children and how they can support their children at home and partner with us here at school. It was focused around the common core and what to expect with the new park assessment that will be coming in the spring. We had a lot of outreach sessions that were smaller group settings, so that way we can give a lot of individualized attention. We received a lot of positive feedback on these sessions. Some of the topics were for parents, tips for parents to support reading at home, reading intervention, just write books for children, guided reading, and book clubs. That was, that program was run by Dr. Banjia and Mr. Miller, our curriculum director, and our supervisor of humanities, Mrs. Dr. Banjia, and we are going to be having some follow-up sessions as well that are going to be grade-specific, or school-specific. We'll have upcoming sessions that will support our students and our parents at the middle school level and also at the high school level, and Mr. Miller will be reaching out to everyone in the near future to give some more updated information on that and when those sessions will occur. And last but not least, I'd just like to also recognize one of our teachers at HBW Middle School. There's a resolution tonight regarding her retirement. Mrs. Kistner has been a committed, dedicated staff member to our Verona students and to our Verona schools for 34 years. She has recently announced her retirement effective February 1st, and I'd just like to recognize her this evening and thank her for all of her dedication to our students and wish her a very happy retirement. Thank you.
I just want to follow up on part of your report on the field committee that met. Did you mention the upper field? Did you mention?
I did, so the upper field was-
And the snack bar. What about the snack bar?
The concession bar, the concession structure would be added. That was one of the recommendations for a snack bar from the field committee as an alternate.
All right. Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, let's do board committee reports. Athletics is up first.
Sure thing. The athletics committee met on Monday morning, and we just touched based on, based on about six items or so. The first item was the field committee, which Rui had spoken to, and then two more involved. The one, the fencing club, so we have five or so students that are interested in starting a fencing club. It's really a precursor to having an organization funded by the board or some type of hybrid funding between parents and board. We also have gymnastics. One of our students is involved in gymnastics and would like to compete. Mr. Freesian found some really unique ways to go ahead and partner with other districts to go ahead and make that happen as well. We had our MK track agreement signed and delivered, so that's all done and completed. Rui had spoken about the hazing speaker for the coaches. We do have an upcoming Student Athletics Code of Conduct agreement that we're going to be, going to be working with. I think we actually might end up titling it kind of a code of ethics agreement. We had an inquiry recently from a community member, or a few actually, regarding Verona's pay-to-play in a sense sports, so, or sports that we pay a bill as a board of ed, but parents also pay part of that as well. Just taking a look into, is it possible for the board to fund it fully, or if not, what are some of the creative financing that we can take on to go ahead and decide what that's going to look like moving forward as we have additional sports and students who are interested? Over the years, lacrosse has grown over time, and we have a significant amount of involvement in it, so we need to consider how we're going to be able to obviously sustain that involvement in a way that's financially feasible for parents, same with ice hockey and so forth. So, and then lastly, we received a really nice letter from one of the teams that we had competed with. Their coach reached out to Gary in a handwritten form and said, we, you know, the word to describe the experience we had when we were exiting your field at the end of the game when the cheerleaders were cheering on both teams was classy. So just really an example of how our school and our team really just shows great sportsmanship, and that was just really nice to hear and really nice to receive. And I think that would probably be about it. Anything else that you would add?
Yeah, just to add, you know, Verona is noted for the great things it does with sports and with the academics, but one of the things that, you know, I hear about all the time right now, and I've been to a few of the games, is the Verona Hillbilly football. They're having a great season. They've shown great teamwork, great ability to come through some tough games, and I want to put a shout out to the Hillbillies. I know they're still playing some more games, so I don't want to jinx them or anything else, but I want to wish them well and congratulations for a great season so far and continue on.
Okay, Community Resources met yesterday, and we had a couple of items to discuss. One was the traffic action step that Mr. Dionisio spoke about earlier. We talked about progress towards getting a forum going so we can review our website content and overall appearance, and that also rings true for the Friday folder. We talked about the first issue of Superintendent's Corner article, which Mr. Dionisio put out onto the news outlets in town. It's on our website as well, and that'll come out about once a month. That's right, that is the intention there, to keep some more transparency in reporting to the public. We did talk about the internship program. I don't think you talked about that in your, in your superintendent's report, but there's a meeting coming up at the high school. Do you want to take a moment and explain the, for the seniors, the last six weeks of the year?
Oh, the Senior Capstone Program.
Capstone, I call it internship.
So, the Senior Capstone Program is an internship experience where students at the end of the year for the last six weeks of school will have an opportunity to, through an application process and trying to support our students, be able to pursue an internship in a field that they're interested in. So perhaps if a student is interested in pursuing an internship in finance, they can end up partnering with a local business professional or someone in New York. They wanted to pursue engineering or architecture, any field that they're interested in. It's really wide open. So right now, our counseling department and our high school administration is working with Mrs. Salisbury, one of our business teachers here at the high school, who's spearheading that project, and she's going to be coordinating all of those efforts. So they're reaching out to the students, getting their interest, soliciting that interest, and then those applications will be due. So as we have more information, we'll be sharing that with you, and actually later on this year during one of our public presentations, it's going to be a follow-up from Mr. Cisa, Mrs. Salisbury, and students who do participate in the Senior Capstone Program. So we look forward to hearing about their personal experiences later on this year.
Now, Rui, is this Capstone Program new, or has this been a yearly thing we've been doing?
This is a new program.
Okay.
Coming through to the high school this year. That was discussed last year and is being implemented for the first time.
Okay. And the last thing that we talked about when Mr. Dionisio's got the, we've got a proposed speaker schedule for the board meetings through the rest of the year, so we've been trying to get richer content at the meetings, more high-level dialogue going, and to be as informational as we can. So there's a schedule that goes out through the rest of the school year for the most part, so the spring sometime.
That's right. Our first, our first session that we'll have is on December 9th. We're going to have Mr. Kish, Andor Kish, who is a teacher at HBW Middle School, who will be coming to present on coding with our HBW students, and they'll be sharing their projects and what they're learning in that class. And then at every board meeting from here on out, from December 9th through the end of May, we will have at least one presentation, whether it's students, our supervisory staff or teachers, or both on some events, some evenings. So stay tuned for that, and we'll post that on our district website, so that way people have an opportunity to see what's coming up.
And I think we had one more item. We discussed getting the district factbook together and updated, so we'll have that together and coming out again soon.
Okay, Buildings and Grounds?
The Buildings and Grounds Committee met this afternoon. The, actually, I'll combine the Buildings and Grounds update with the referendum committee report, so I'll then just reiterate some of the things that Rui already spoke about. So overall, the project is on schedule. The, some of the milestones that we are about to hit is tomorrow, there's a planning board, a review meeting for the planning board to assess the, our plans for the school construction, how it marries up to their master plan. So that review meeting will take place tomorrow. And, but overall, it's still on schedule. We expect to start going out for bids in the first quarter of next year for all of the projects, and so the heavy construction is scheduled to be during the summer. One element of the project is, has started, it's the technology upgrades, and there is a, tomorrow night is scheduled, a core network switch, so I don't know what that is, but I know it's three days ahead of schedule. So I take that as good news. So congratulations to the team that's implementing, executing that project. The Buildings and Grounds Committee was dominated tonight by the, we invited the Honeywell Organization to come in and present to the Buildings and Grounds Committee their findings, their assessment, and their plan for the ESIP, the Energy Savings Investment Program for the energy upgrades and capital investment that we're going to do with the school. So the summary is that they are projecting, or they're, they are going to ask us to implement a capital spending plan of about $3.1 million net of some rebates that we'll get of about $400,000. And then once we implement those, that investment, those investment items, we will start to realize, on average, about $250,000 per year in energy cost savings at the, at the current energy unit cost. So over the 15-year period, it'll be about $3.6 million payback against a $3 million or so investment. So that's a return on investment of about four and a half percent or so, and it's the imputed interest rate that's going to cost us for the, in the capital lease is about 3%. So we're exceeding our cost in the investment, the capital cost, so it's a, it's a win. The, the next steps will be, so I think we can schedule another Buildings and Grounds Committee meeting, maybe on the 25th of November, because what they would like is for us to adopt their plan on December 9th and to have that as a resolution. So they have a model resolution that they're going to provide us, so that, right now, the plan would be to have that in the resolution packet on the, for the December 9th meeting.
Just two questions. I'm sorry, so the 200-odd thousand dollar save and consumption cost, that, we don't, that's not money that we're free to spend. Is that money that would get recycled right into paying the implied debt on the capital project? Is that, or do we get-
Well, we're free to spend it, but yeah, once we sign the capital lease, we have to pay, we have to pay the lease.
Right, I'm saying-
So that money's going to be used to pay the lease.
Right, so we don't free, we don't free budget cash by doing it. We improve, we improve infrastructure without increasing costs. That's the benefit, right?
Yeah, but it's, the savings is more than the, the-
The payment.
Yeah.
Okay, so the 200K number, that's the total save, or that's the net save to us?
That's the total savings. That's the total save, yeah.
Do you know what the net save is projected?
Yeah, the present values is, oh, no, I'm sorry, the summed value is about a half a million dollars over 15 years. So the total savings is 3.6 million against a $3 million investment today.
Over 15 years. So it's 600K gross over 15 years.
Over 15 years, yeah.
Roughly straight line, right? This is-
Yeah, so the $3 million investment, that will, it'll be a capital lease, so we'll pay that off over 15 years at an expected imputed interest rate of 3%. And then the total savings over that 15-year period will be 3.6 million dollars.
So it's about, yeah, okay.
So it's 20 grand a year, roughly on a-
Yeah.
No, 40 grand a year, yeah.
Okay, all right, got it, got it. And then, and then the, what's left to do on it? So you're saying there'll be a Buildings and Grounds meeting in November so that we can do a resolution on December 9th?
Yeah, so the resolution will be to trigger the RFP to go out for the capital lease funding.
No, what I'm saying is, what's, what are we waiting on in order, such that we don't do it on November 25th? What's yet to happen?
Yeah, so the, the meeting ended before we could really wrap it up, so I just want to get some, a summary from Paul McDivitt on exactly what we have to do next, so it wasn't exactly clear to me at the-
There's something to be done between now and November. Buildings and Grounds Committee to review it-
And we're waiting-
-take it to the board for-
For December 9th.
-December 9th resolution.
But we're also waiting for BPU to get back to us?
Yes, the-
That's the piece that we're still waiting on, so they can review that information and approve it, because it has to be approved by them.
BPU is the, this, the state monitor around it?
Yes, the state thing. So yeah, so they do two things, or they use two reports to make their determination that, to give us the green light. One is Honeywell's audit, their investment-grade audit, and then the, we had to hire a third-party auditing firm to check Honeywell's numbers. And we have that, so that report is back, and they validated Honeywell's savings projections. So now it's with the regulators that then have to sign off on it. But we do expect to get that well before December 9th, so I think we'll have that for our next-
I think we'll have that before the 25th-
The 25th, right.
Okay, all right.
And then we'll have on December 9th. The anticipation is for us to have Honeywell do a 15-minute, 20-minute presentation here at a board meeting as well to-
That's on the schedule.
That's on the schedule, to give an overview of the program for the public.
And if we have like, I guess, if all goes well and we get everything passed, and is there a timeline when we would actually commence the-
Yeah, they're also going to start-
Upgrading the lights and things?
Yeah, so they're going to start, in fact, I think the schedule was to start, for them to start in February. And if you're interested, maybe you could have a copy made for the, you're welcome to us.
No, just-
Just have, distribute it to the board in the next pack or something.
Education Committee met earlier today, and we covered special services as well as Mr. Miller's overall curriculum agenda. On special services, we covered a couple of new students moving in into the program, moving into town that need to be absorbed into our programs here. Talked a bit about work that Mr. Dionisio referenced before, that we're doing in conjunction with the Child Organization. Nurses' information being posted about as we're into flu season and other concerns around illnesses, information about that is posted on the website. Couple of personnel items that we had to talk about, again, specific to special education that all seem to be covered, so these were, they're in the, they're in the report to the board with some awareness, and then a litany of professional development that's going on as well. In curriculum, we covered the transition, transitioning of the graduation requirements. So graduations requirements are shifting because of the, the exit of the HESPA exam this year, and so you should receive a set of documents that explain the sort of alternatives that we'll be able to use, park included, to meet graduation requirements. We did review, and this is preliminary, so it's not yet public information, so I can't talk about the specifics, but it's basically the state's annual progress report for, for the, each school in the district across our targets that were set a couple of years ago. I believe it also originated from the No Child Left Behind legislation. In any case, it's a very favorable report for Verona, especially when you look at the other schools in our peer group that are listed, but we'll have to let that become public, but I think the board can get that in advance. We reviewed the November schedule of professional development across the district. New club up at the high school around fashion with a volunteer teacher to run the club for this year as a trial. We'll see how that goes. And then the rest were personnel resolutions, which are on the agenda for tonight, the resolutions 2.2, 2.3, resolution 3, and resolution 4, around a whole series of personnel appointment and changes. Okay? I don't think we have any discussion items for tonight, actually-
One item, I have to report out on the convention that I attended, just based on-
Oh, actually, there's two items, that and miracles. We should talk about miracles.
All right, yeah, okay, perfect. So just, I have to report out on it based on board guidelines, but also I'd like to, just because it was interesting. Last week, was last week? I'm like, it's, I can't remember now, a week or two ago?
Your report's off to a bad start.
Rui and I, Mr. Dionisio and I attended the convention down in Jersey City for school boards. It was just a phenomenal experience. It's basically three days of professional development around anything that you could, you know, imagine when it comes to schools. So they have just a huge expo center with a lot of innovative companies and programs that are being discussed and displayed, and then several different pop-in sessions, everything from board governance to laws to sustainable schools to curriculum to special needs. So I attended a few of the sessions. A couple of the highlights were, I attended one of the STEM sessions, which has to do with the Engineering by Design program that we brought into Verona, and had the opportunity to build this really cool catapult, which was really, really fun, and kind of wished that I had that when I was a kid in school, but it was just a great experience. And if I was having a lot of fun as an adult, I can only imagine the experience that our students here are having. I attended the analyzing salary guide session, and it was just kind of funny to see, I'll put it on camera, a lot of our work on the screen. You know, it's the- You know, it's the truth, I mean, you know, so that was, that was a really unique session, but also a good session to attend as we're leading up to negotiate, negotiations, and just a testament to the work that we do here, as well as a board, in, in terms of what we, the work we put into our.
They use the, they use the model that.
The model, yeah.
The model, that's the model on the forecast. Remember how we, we did that, that, the, the model that shows the scenarios of if you, what we were talking about before, if you assume certain change in healthcare, you assume a certain, certain change to the guide, and you take it out X number of years, and what your cap is, what your relief is, what your, what you'd have to cannibalize to achieve that, that school boards is using that. They showcased it down in Atlantic City as a way to go about.
Really?
So, it's a Verona invention that we use with the teachers' union here as we negotiate teachers' contract. And then, there was a, in one of the other legislative bits, they showcased on one of the, the legal.
Oh, really?
Bits, they showcased it, one, one of the court cases that we had here in, in Verona in the last year or two, as a precedent validating case as well.
Yeah, so I was sitting in the governance meeting as well, and they used, actually, yeah, one of the court cases recently that Verona was featured in as precedent setting, so that was interesting. Just kind of some unique moments. I, I, do you remember what the name, was it Sustainable New Jersey?
Sustainable New Jersey.
That is, okay, so they just launched a new program while we were down there, Sustainable New Jersey, and I wanted to bring this up for consideration. Because we're working with Honeywell, and we're currently doing the referendum improvements, we actually qualify for a lot of what Sustainable New Jersey would certify us for. So, basically, you would apply for the program, you, you would identify some members or staff members who would be the lead on it, and you receive some level of certification based on how green your school is. A lot of the boxes you need to check are really, we're already doing. So, we would receive some level of certification just for the fact of existing at this point. And then, you just have a plan moving forward of what else you would do. So, some things revolve around curriculum. So, you know, how do we teach sustainability through our curriculum, and we already are doing some things. And then, the ESIP program, a lot of what we're doing in the ESIP program already is identified as changes that you wouldn't do instructionally, but changes that you would do to your infrastructure. So, they have a couple of different categories that you would choose from to get a certain amount of points to get your certification. So, without going into too much detail now, I just, I mean, if that's okay, possibly to have Mr. D'Onnecchio and company look into a little bit more, because rather than us having to backtrack afterwards, if we wanted to do it, and figure out where we do qualify, at this point, we would literally just apply for it, and then hand that application with the checkboxes on it to Honeywell and Company that we're working with, and say, just please check the boxes for us of what we're doing, and then we would just go ahead and hand that into the organization, and then go ahead and be done with the process. The other way is having to have really comb through it ourselves. So, I think we're kind of in a unique position to use the people we're already paying to go ahead and just check the boxes for us, but also, I think it's a good thing, I think it's a good precedent setting in terms of our commitment to being green, you know, and we have a pretty outspoken community around that initiative as well, that has helped us to make some changes in our schools, too. So, I think it would be a really phenomenal program to get involved in, possibly.
One, one other discussion point we had were superintendent merit goals, so we, we set a set of goals around to the, to the board, got a little bit of feedback that sort of, some good, some saying we need to put a little bit more thought behind some of the goals. I did send up the goals to school boards yesterday, they're closed today, they told me that they, they will try to get us some review info back, maybe tomorrow, on how they would assess what those proposed goals are, but if, I think the right thing to do at this point is, we'll get that feedback from school boards, and then turn it over to two volunteer board members to maybe work with Mr. D'Onnecchio, and then finalize the, the last bits of these goals. I think there's five altogether, I think we're probably okay on three of them, maybe there's a question on two of them, but we should get that feedback, I think, first, and then bring it back to a table. So, as soon as I get that back, I'll send it out, and then we'll look to get two board members, because it shouldn't only be one, it should be two, and, and wrap those up and get them into the county, for the year gets too far deep. Ms. Nodine, you want to read off the election results as well? We forgot about that.
On November 4th, the school board election took place, and it was for one seat with a three-year term. 3,065 votes were cast, votes cast for one board seat, with the three terms were as follows. Dominic Ferry received 799 votes. Joanna Breitenbach received 588 votes. Michael Perry received 340 votes. Lisa Fresky received 924 votes. Judith Donapoli received 406 votes, and there were eight write-in votes. The top vote getter was Lisa Fresky, and Mrs. Fresky will be sworn in at the first meeting in January.
Okay. Okay, let's do our resolutions.
Just have one correction on resolution number four. In the second column under the aid names, Ben Petty is going to be redacted from that Resolve that the Board of Education approve resolutions number one through number five.
Second.
It's moved by Mr. Yunus, seconded by Mr. Bellino. Any questions?
Yeah, I have a question on number three. When it says five emergency days with pay, is the pay going to be, is it going to be, are there compensation days being used here, or we're just going to pay the person?
It was an extending, extenuating circumstance that occurred with the staff member traveling beyond for an emergency out of the country.
So, they're not, they're not sick days, they're not using sick days for any personal days? The five days are gratis days?
These five days are coming out of their emergency days above and beyond what they're permitted, and they're coming out of their sick days.
Coming out of their sick days.
Yes.
You're reducing the bank, basically, is what you're doing. Any other questions? Let's call the roll.
Mr. Spardo?
Aye.
Mr. Day?
Aye.
Mr. Bellino?
Yes.
Mr. Yunus?
Yes.
Mr. Quattrucci?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, we'll open the meeting up to public comment or questions.
Virginia Sotranos, 68 Newman, putting on my environmental commission hat. Verona does have a sustainable jersey team now. You can follow up with either Steve Neal in the town government, or Gloria McNowsky on the environmental commission. But we've been, they, the people who've been on the commission have been sort of going back to a lot of the things that have been done already by the environmental commission, so we're rapidly gathering a lot of points for it. But either one of them can give you more details on, on how it can come into the schools.
You got that? Or, perfect. Yeah, it'd be great, exactly, because otherwise, we're backtracking, you know?
Well, I mean, there's probably, what we discovered in going through the materials for sustainable jersey, is that there were a lot of things that we had done that would already qualify. And it does become significant, because, I mean, a lot of it, in the beginning, is just small grants, but $5,000 here, $5,000 there, it adds up, and then there are some very big grants that they make available to people, and it, I would think that the energy savings thing would get us a long way down the road on that.
Especially the, the new garden that they're building at Lanning, too? I mean, that's just a phenomenal improvement, and right there with curriculum and infrastructure.
The greenhouse.
Yeah, the greenhouse is, yeah, it's just so many things.
There's a lot of things that qualify.
Yeah, so, thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks. Anybody else?
Norma Francolo, Manor Road. Just a question about the resolution, 2.4, the stipend.
I'm sorry, 4, you said 2.4?
2.4, sorry. Is the sixth grade class, the grade books, is, is that an elective?
It is.
Okay, and just clarification, that's why there's a stipend for those classes, the grade books, social studies class, and national history?
So, this is as a result of an unexpected leave replacement that just came to us last week. So, in an effort during the cycle courses for the students to not disrupt instruction for them, we needed people who were certified and qualified to teach those classes on a per diem basis. Yesterday, we actually found a candidate who will be taking over for the, all of these courses that will be starting in the next couple of weeks, we anticipate. They will be receiving their certification through the Department of Education in New Jersey, they're just waiting on that. So, this is a temporary hold, so that way, we can continue with instruction without disrupting it for our students until that person gets here.
Okay, great, all right, thank you.
These are, it's, it's not sixth grade, it's, it's if a teacher teaches a sixth class in their workday. That's, that's what it is, that's, it's not sixth, it's not sixth grade, it's, it's a teacher teaching a sixth.
Period class.
Period in their workday, right, temporarily.
Okay, great, all right, thank you for that clarification.
You're welcome.
Anyone else?
My name is Robin Karpinski, I live on Fairview Avenue in Verona. It's going to be a little long, I'm sorry, but I'll get through it. I have four children who have gone through, or are still going through, the Verona school system. I was born here and have lived in Verona for all of but five years of my entire life. During this time, I have seen our town grow and improve in so many ways over these many years. One of the things I remember most of my high school years, I was a proud member of the marching maroon and white band throughout high school, and just like my daughter, who was a senior now, I was in the color guard all four years, and we were a competitive band. Going back to around 33 years ago, it was my freshman year, and we practiced every weekday morning in the fall, beginning at 7:30 a.m., and we performed our show at numerous competitions, as well as every Saturday at every football game. Home games were on the lower field. I remember what a chore it was to move the large band instruments, and the color guard equipment, and the drum majors podium down and back, down and back up the Sampson Drive hill, every single morning, and that was nothing compared to what today's marching band members have to haul back and forth nowadays. At the beginning of my sophomore year, we were moved to the newly-built upper field. It was quite a welcome change for us. I was a teenager, so I do not know all of the circumstances surrounding the move up, top, but I have to believe it was perhaps the result of a referendum or something similar that was approved, because moving these activities to the upper field was the right thing to do. It was close to the school, the band room, the locker rooms, the cafeteria, the bathrooms, and the parking lot. It made complete and total sense for everyone, and as such, it became our permanent field. For more than 30 years, it served us quite well, but only until a few years ago, when something happened. So, let's fast forward to 2014. Verona residents approved a referendum authorizing the Board of Ed to raise funds to help pay for the much-needed repairs and improvements to the school facilities, including a field project. There were no written plans, however, no blueprints of any kind regarding the field portion of the referendum, when we went to the polls. At the time of the vote, we only had a makeshift field because sinkholes developed on our permanent upper field. The referendum became our answer to get our nice field back. We needed this. Therefore, many of us, including myself, voted for the referendum without seeing any field plans. And we all won, or did we? Well, some of our fellow taxpaying residents who live closest to the field did not win at all, and why? Because now, after the vote, there are plans, and there are blueprints, and those residents have seen them, and these plans are not acceptable to them. It is my understanding that the Board of Ed can implement a field project of this scope and does not have to abide by any land use laws or zoning regulations. Unlike taxpaying residents, the Board of Ed is exempt. None of the field work has to be inspected for any kind of conformity or environmental safety, but if it did have to be inspected, I don't think 33 years ago, the fill that was placed at the upper field would have ever passed, and now, the upper field has developed numerous sinkholes. I have to believe that this problem could have been avoided had the Board of Ed required to have environmental inspections performed on the work. So, now, I have to ask, if the new field project does not require any kind of inspections, are the 1,200-seat bleachers that are to be located on top of fill near Grove Avenue going to collapse in 30 years? So, what happened? Well, it seems 33 years ago, the Board of Ed back then had the right idea, but the wrong plan. I don't know if residents realize this or not, but all we can essentially vote on is the funding. Yes, we heard that a portion of the funding was for a field project, but we have no say in the plans themselves, and we did not see the field plans at the time of the vote. We couldn't have, because there were none. So, for all intents and purposes, the Board of Ed can actually use these funds that we just approved, and transplant Michael Jackson's Neverland Ranch onto the lower field, and there's nothing we can do to change that. In my opinion, that is wrong. This is not a good or fair policy in any way, and I think it needs to change. So, I have to ask another question. If the upper field was the right location 33 years ago, and no one, it seems, ever suggested since that time of returning to the lower field, why is it now, today, no longer the best location for the football field? A few years ago, a car raffle fundraiser was held to help pay for the installation of a new turf field with lights at the upper field. It seems residents were obviously happy with the field located right where it was, because they had held and supported this worthy fundraiser, and we should still be happy to keep it up there. It still makes the best sense. All we need to do is fix it. We can, and we should. We can turf it and put lights on it. It wouldn't require eight 110-foot poles with up to 24 lamps, like the lower field plans currently suggest. To give a little perspective, 110-foot poles are as high as an 11-story building. I'm sure you are familiar with a building located at Two Broad Street in Bloomfield. That is a 10-story building. These lights will be taller than Two Broad Street in Bloomfield. I can only imagine the wattage that will be coming off of these lights, and at what cost. The upper field, however, would only need four poles at 50 to 65 feet high with no more than 11 lamps. If you look around, you will see that that is pretty much the standard for most high school football stadiums. Doing this project at the right location, the upper field, on a much smaller scale, would give us what we need. It would certainly save taxpayers a lot of money, I would think, and it would make you guys, this Board of Ed, look like heroes for doing so. This morning, I read an article in Today's Star Ledger that stated, according to a survey, half of all New Jersey residents say they want to eventually leave the state. The survey found that the chief culprit is New Jersey's tax burden. New Jersey collects about $3,000 per capita in property taxes, 5.5% of a typical American's personal income. More startling was the disproportion to the rest of the country. 79% of all Americans paid less than $1,750 in property taxes. Wow. 3% paid more than $4,000, and just 0.2% paid more than $8,000. Most, if not all of us in Verona, are in that 0.2%. The last thing I want to point out is that this field project has divided the residents, and it has not been pretty. Many residents who are for the current field project plans, as is, have accused good taxpaying residents who live around the lower field of trying to block the project. I can assure you, they are not trying to block the project at all, they just want it done differently. They would like to see it be kept at the upper field. I'm sure you have all seen the upper field lately, it is quite an eyesore. There is no reason, that I am aware of, why the upper field should not be fixed and put back to good use. Otherwise, the taxes that were paid to fund the permanent upper field 33 years ago has now been wasted on a field that is now defunct. Let's not repeat this again. I do hope, though, that this Board of Ed has learned from the past, and will ensure that this project funded by taxpayers will conform to land use laws and zoning regulations, will have routine inspections performed, and will make certain it is acceptable to every taxpaying resident in this town. In closing, I challenge the Board of Ed to explore better options before finalizing any plans. Could it delay the project? Maybe a little, but wouldn't it be smarter to start and finish the project with the right plans at a little bit later dates than to start and finish the project with the wrong plans at an earlier date, just to get it done? Wouldn't that be the right thing to do? Let's move the field project to the upper field where it belongs. It is not too late, and not only does it benefit our kids and our wallets, but it will also help maintain the quality of life, of life of the residents living nearest to the fields, because, yes, they do matter, too. I implore the Board of Ed to do the right thing, and implement the right idea, which you have, with the right plans. Thank you.
Just, Ms. Karpinski, just a couple of points about that, the, sorry, I hear your plea.
Okay.
It doesn't, all of this banter about the fields doesn't fall on deaf ears, it.
Okay, I hope not.
It doesn't.
Okay.
However, a couple of things. One is the, we had the referendum language and the presentation material reviewed by our attorneys and an outside attorney, they both came back with letters that said essentially the same thing, that the board is obligated to honor the language in the referendum.
Mm-hmm.
For every. for every intent and purpose, and that includes turfing the lower field specifically and lighting it per the design sketches that we had and all of that. You're right about the about the diagrams and the detailed plans weren't there at the time of the vote, but that's normal sort of process and procedure for how the the board would operate. But we take that at face value. The, we do have inspections on the grounds for the lower fields that we can share, if you if you'd like to get copies of that, about what's below the ground, and they they drew, I forget how many holes they they bore throughout just to test what was underneath there, to make sure that the lower field was stable and all of that, exactly. But the last thing anybody in the board wants is to put something up there and then have it fall six feet below the ground.
Exactly.
The upper field plan, and we do have a report we can show you on this too. The upper field was the original plan that we tried for the referendum in two ways. One, we did put it in front of the voter twice. Personally, for me, it's sort of mathematically not a sensible vote in a way, because it it failed twice. And at the time, we forecasted about two-million-dollar project. But the one that was much more cost on the lower field, which is a greater area, passed by a wide margin. So we failed miserably twice on the upper field vote, but the third vote was for the lower field, and that's the one that passed recently. And and the two failed votes were in oh five and oh seven. That said, the upper field dilemma that we have is that the cost, the original cost to fix the upper field, to fix it and return it so that it's usable for the intentions, for all intents and purposes, run the football games up there, lacrosse, soccer, and all of that, and put lights up there, was very close to the cost of doing the lower field to do it properly. The alternative to doing it properly were to come in and do a very disruptive seismic sort of operation, and it's in the report, and we can get you a copy of that report too. Would have would have required them bringing in a sort of a slab of lead and concrete about the size of a bus up on a crane and pounding it, dropping it from a crane, and that would have been too disruptive to all the homes around. You could just imagine what destruction that would have done. And the idea there was that we would bash down whatever was below ground, which in most cases, which in part of the field goes down about eighteen feet. You'd have to bash that down to some stable level, and it would not guarantee that we would avoid the sinkholes. The remediation plan that we have, that we talked about earlier, has been an alternate to the plan to recover as much of the upper field as possible. And I don't want to mince words. When we say to remediate the upper field in in two thousand fourteen speak, it's to remediate about two-thirds roughly of what the upper field is. So if you're looking at the upper field from Sampson Drive, and you're looking into the field, the right side would be closest to the school building. The left side is closest to the tree line and the lower field. The two-thirds to the right is pretty much stable ground. It's it's earth and soil.
Nicely, but the rest of it's.
The rest of it you can't, because the rest of it is where it really pitches down, and that's where all the fill is, and that's the dilemma. So the idea is to cordon that off, turn it into some kind of garden, maintain it as best we can, but close it for use for all intents and purposes.
Can't be fixed, that area of the field?
Only way to fix it is to do the bashing down that I described prior, or excavate it. And the excavating in today's laws, one of the things we had talked about, and we had the engineers come in, and they were talking about what's down there, and if you excavated it, what the cost would entail and why. And simple things, like it's it's there's no poison material down there. It's not like we'd uncover a Pandora's box of chemicals. It's not that. If you get past the the scientific names for the material, in English, we call it stuff like asphalt and as concrete with asbestos in it. And the problem with asphalt is you and I can walk on it all we want. You can fry an egg on it in the summer and eat it, no problem. But if you crumble it up and throw it into the ground, it's hazardous waste, and it's got to be disposed of. So the cost, so we have, we do have a report that goes back to sometime last year when we started the endeavor, and it does lay out the alternatives on how to deal with the upper field. And if you add it up, in the end, it came, it wasn't quite exactly the same, but it was very close to what it would cost to just do the lower field. And the the reason why we went with the lower field is the lower field, A, was three times the square footage of the upper field for about the same ballpark amount of money. So the difference in price wasn't all that great to do it. And that was the dilemma that we had. Now, what we are trying to do, though, is we are working with the township, with the engineer and the planning board. We do want to go through and as open a way as possible, if there are things in there that we need to change. Mr. Help gave us a whole bunch of of line items to go ahead and deal with, as many of them as we can prudently deal with that we believe are reasonable. We've put into the plan. The restrooms have always been part of our alternate plan. The reason why the alternate, the the restrooms were not in the plan is because we have two ways to put restrooms up. One way to put, because what we did is we we did not budget for them, given the amount of contingency money that goes into the referendum by law. There's a lot of money that's built in to the bud, to the bond on contingency basis that we're obligated to do. We wouldn't have put that much in. But because there's that much in there, we said, alright, well, there's probably going to be enough of a reserve in there to put up restrooms of one type or another. One type is just build the restrooms the way you'd want in a new facility. And if we run out of cash, we're going to take the existing structure that's there now, the white building, and turn that into restroom facilities, and we'll do that for a far less cost. So we've asked the engineers and outside to include some version of that, so that when they go to the planning board tomorrow night, those are reflected in there somehow with the understanding that, look, depending on how much money we have, we'll either do it this way or that way. And it was probably a mistake on our part to not show them, because it created a whole bunch of confusion, as there's not going to be restrooms and all the rest.
Yeah, well, it seemed like you put this big mega-sports complex down there, and there's no bathrooms. I mean, it really, you know.
No, absolutely. And I parked my car, and somebody had to take my mother in a golf cart up to the bathroom, and meanwhile, the porta-johns are right there. And I was, you know, do I tell my mother, go take the golf cart to the bathroom, or go use the porta-john? It's embarrassing for everybody. Exactly. So so we're, so that's that's part of the plan too. So the process that we're trying to get to is, got a couple of facets to it. One, let's get through the planning board review and see what comes back out of that. That's the the first thing. That's tomorrow night, by coincidence, right, just on the schedule. We do believe that we've got everything that the planning board would ask for, and Mr. Help would ask for, it's sort of reflected in the plan already. There's a couple of things that we did not sketch in, but we've agreed that we'll put in, because rather than go back and have the engineer and pay the engineers over and over again to amend the sketch. Say, look, yeah, you're right, we're going to stagger this wall in this way, or whatever the case may be. We'll go to bid. It still has to come back from bid to say, the amount of money that that we've forecasted for this is adequate for the engine, for the, whatever construction company wins the bid to go do the project on, within a certain timeframe to the specs that we put out. We'll have to do that. We do need to conform to all the building codes in town. So it's, the township has jurisdiction on everything from how the electricity's run, to the sewer lines, to the water lines, to all kinds of stuff. So all building code, we have to, we are obligated to conform to as you'd want. And and then beyond that, one of the things we have talked about is, and we have time for this, so we're perfect. We we want to do this. We want to make sure that the board is is as committed as possible to what proper and reasonable use of the of the fields are. We have worked with the town already. We have a sign, sort of a signed-off, validated what-if schedule that we've done together with the town that shows that, and the town has said, look, to the extent that Hilltop is finished, which it should be finished this spring, the town has no rec department need for the high school field. So there won't be, we won't be running any rec department. In normal use, we won't be running any rec department programs up at the high school. I'll get back to why I say normal use in a second. I'm not trying to guard words there. But the schedule that we've put together shows a a greatly limited number of nights where those lights would be on much past around nine, nine-thirty. And ninety percent of the nights that those lights are on during the week, certainly, and there's no Sunday nights, right? So take Sunday nights out. There's there's no Saturday nights, other than special events like the band competition, that one night a year, you know, might be a Saturday night. But and there's and there's four or five home football games per season. After that, there are occasional nights of of a sport going until the evening. But the evening, we think, is more like nine, nine-thirty-ish, with maybe a half an hour of exit the stadium and then shut down the lights. You know, so you have, you're not shutting down lights while there's still people out there. But ninety percent of the usage where the lights would run till about nine o'clock is band practice only, if you look at the schedule that we that we have. Now, the schedule uses a sample of the number of games and number of events out there. So it's all, you know, it's, and it's, again, it was done together between Jim Cunningham representing all the town constituents, and the high school was, aside was done by Gary Freeshen, and they did that together. And the board, we've talked about putting a policy in place that talks about the number of days per week and the hours per day that those lights should be on.
Okay.
Again, in normal, in normal use. And the reason why I say normal use is only because we do believe that there are occasions where there is an unfortunate event of a field closing that the town uses or something like that, and you have to accommodate it, because.
Stuff happens, I know.
Right, right. So so it's important to remember that this Board of Ed property and our bylaws is determined to be community property for the town. So the pecking order for use of all of our facilities is Board of Ed needs first, township second. Anything that the town says, look, we need space to conduct a meeting or to have an event.
Does that generate revenue?
No.
No.
No, it's it's community property, so it all comes out of the same wallet and pocketbook, so there's no revenue. And so far, I mean, I could speak for this board, and probably the new board, as Mrs. Freshy is out there too. The board has zero desire, zero desire to generate, try to generate revenue by renting the space for two reasons. One, the biggest reason is, we've yet to rent space to someone outside of the township of Verona, where it didn't come back to be a huge pain in the backside for us to go deal with. You know, there's damage, there's.
I've heard Cedar Grove, they've rented out their, one of their fields, and I hear there's been a lot of.
It's all kinds of stuff, right. It's just not worth, right. So the amount of money that you make doing it is not that great. Now, in that case, if there was a market for somebody to rent space, rent Centennial.
Right.
And there's a, I think there's a college football program that does rent Centennial on some limited basis.
You call a college.
Yeah, for the, like, in the summer to run. But that only runs like ten in the morning till one in the afternoon or something like that, a couple of days a week. That's where we would direct them to go. There's no, and we would keep the thing locked up as, you know, just just to keep it quiet. So I I think the the most constructive thing to do is we'll get past this planning board meeting, see how that goes. That's the first thing. But if you'd like, contact Mr. D'Onisio, and and we'll prepare a folder and say, look, here's the the report that we got on what's under the upper field and how to go deal with that. There's a FPA report on that that we got.
Did you talk to the the neighbors in that area to see if they would oppose doing something like that?
We didn't. We, you know, we did not. We did not go out and and solicit feedback from neighbors around the buildings. In retrospect, perhaps we should have. We we didn't do that. We did it.
Is it too late to do something like that?
Well, you know, it it's not too late, and to get input, given the confines of what the project is defined so far. So, for example, not doing the lower field and doing it somewhere else, we believe is a nonstarter, given what the two attorneys are telling us. So when I say two attorneys, I'm two different law firms, right? We we're obligated to carry the project out by all intents on the lower field with the lights.
I understand that.
The remediation of the upper field, we believe is desirable for two reasons. Number one, we need to do some, we should do something with it. If we, leaving it the way it is is not an option to the board. Either recover parts of it and be able to use it. So what would be a beaut, what would be a terrific outcome? If if a byproduct of of the referendum money was such that we can remediate the two-thirds of that field like I described, one outcome could be put up enough lights up there, so that that eighty percent of the time that the lights would be on on the lower field for the band to practice, they would practice up there instead. So the band is up there, the lights are up there, and most nights of the week, you wouldn't be running the lower field. At least not past nine, you know, eight, nine o'clock at night, right? That's one thing. The second thing is, it serves absolutely zero purpose now. Aside from the fact that it's an eyesore, zero purpose. So if we can't remediate it, then for, you know, the guy lost his car the other day. So maybe we should just pave the whole thing and make it an additional lot, you know, something, right? To prevent, you know, you can't get a sinkhole so much in the asphalt on the safe part of it. So there's a couple of ideas out there. I think we're going to have to see what the bids come in at, to know how much money we're talking about, and then we can go from there.
Right. I just want to make one more comment about the lower field then. The way I understand it, and I'm not the expert, I haven't, you know, studied the plans, but I've glimpsed at them. It's really going to be two fields side by side, which is the reason why you need eight poles of lights around these fields. Because in order to illuminate two fields, you have to have lights out on the perimeter of two fields.
The second part of the reason is, because the area is so wide that you could fit the two fields. If you just lit up one side, you'd have a field where people wandering in, and then like a dark area of it that you probably should not have, right, for safety purposes.
You know, I just thought maybe if 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 it does go ahead with the lower field, why would you have to have two fields down there turf? Why wouldn't you have just a football-sized field with four poles of lights that aren't one-hundred-and-ten feet?
Yeah, that's a good question. The reason is because the baseball field is down there too, and the poles, some combination of poles slash bleachers would be in the outfield of the baseball field, because you'd be able to move those. The poles would have to be across the field, right?
You have one field where the baseball diamond is, and then you have another field next to that.
Talk about going this way.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that would, there was a problem with that, how much room you had this way to fit that whole field, plus the distance behind the end zones and all. And they have the softball field on the other corner. So you'd have the same problem with the lights along the perimeter. You just would have lights in the outs, in the outside of that.
Alright, I just, I just can't imagine what one-hundred-and-ten-foot poles with twenty, up to twenty-four lamps are going to, how far that light is going to reach.
Yeah, no, we're, look, we're concerned about the same thing, like the last thing we need.
You know, the usage of of the field is going to be key, I think.
That's right. That's, and we've said that from the beginning. So I think the, once we do this, if you can, Ms. Karpinski, we can get you contacted for more information, easy enough. So why don't we, why don't you come in, sit with Mr. D'Onisio, or Mr. McDivitt, or Ms. Dino, however appropriate, and we'll put together a packet that says, here's the evaluation we did on the upper field, so you have that. Here's the the estimates on what it would take to remediate that, right? And then, and here's the sample schedule that we put out with the upper field not remediated. So what you're going to see in there is the band usage.
Okay.
Alright, and it gets you a sense of what the usage would look like. And that's why the board is saying, look, we should just have a policy in place as we get closer to the time. That's reasonable usage, so we're not disrupting too much.
Well, thank you for hearing me out, and thank you for the response. I'm glad that you you gave all the information that you did, because I can tell people to check out the meeting and listen to what you had to say in response to what I had to say, and I appreciate.
Yep, no, my pleasure.
So hopefully, we'll get our.
Yep, okay, great. Thanks. Anybody else?
Diane's Palm at Todd Terrace. First of all, you did put it to the public twice to vote on, but you didn't piggyback, piggyback it on the school improvements. So therefore, how many of the people really voted for the fields, and how many really voted for the school improvements? Because many people I spoke to said, well, how could you not want all these improvements done to the school? And I did. And I would really like to know what would have happened if Mr. Forte didn't get all of his sports people on this and vote for this, if it would have gone through, if you had said, this is what the taxes are going to be on just the schools. This is what the taxes are going to be on the fields, and let the people decide what they wanted to vote yes on.
You talk about the packaging of the question.
You packaged it. That was a very convenient way of getting it passed. So I, we really don't want to hear about how two times you put it out there and it was voted down, because two times you didn't piggyback it on the school improvements, which we all agree we need. Second of all, you are going to put it out to public use, not just the high school use, which has been stated at a recent meeting. So I don't, I don't buy any of that. The town will be using it for town programs, not just high school programs. I'm not going to say where I I know that from. The person sitting here knows where I heard that from. But he did state that, yes, that will be used by the town, for the town. It will be a town field, not a high school field, not a school field. I'm telling you what I heard, and I don't want rebuttal. I'm just telling you, you're telling me it's for the school bands, that would be great. But that's not the case. It's going to be for the public. The public's going to want to use it. The public's going to come after, come after the board to use it, and you may say no, but I don't, I don't hold that to be true, as as the way it's going to happen.
Okay, so the, I don't have conjecture. What I have is the schedule prepared together with.
We asked for a schedule. We gave us, we we gave a usage policy. We got back not workable. That was it. No, no offer of anything whatsoever. There's been no communication to us as far as what would work for us. And quite honestly, Mr. Quatrochi, I would like you to go sit on the deck of Diane Rashi's house. Look at the tennis lights and see that every night, and then look at the front of her steps and look at what she's going to be looking at at that field, whether those lights are on or not. What you don't get is it's not just the lights being on, it's that eyesore of those eight poles, one-hundred-and-ten feet up every day. That's going to change the entire look of everybody looking out of their houses from from then on. It's not just about the lights. The lights have a lot to do with it, but I'm walking, I'm coming up here, and I'm seeing how the tennis courts are lighting up all those houses' backyards on Dodd Terrace, and now we're going to have them lighting up the front of our yards, plus much more of that, and we're going to have those poles to look at.
Well, one of the things we talked about before was changing the tennis court's lights to avoid that happening anymore as part of the referendum work.
They're still going to be glow. They're still going to glow with the other ones.
I, I, look.
And if you build it, you're going to use it. This is going to be the the jewel of Verona. Let's not kid each other. It's going to be. It's not going to be a high school field. You want to tell yourself that, you go right ahead, but we don't believe it.
I'm just.
And I know it's been repeated that it's not going to be just for the high school.
I'm just.
It wouldn't make sense to spend that kind of money to have two hundred kids play on that field.
Okay, we can agree to disagree.
Okay.
I'm upholding with the schedule that we did with the town that says it's different than what you're saying.
Schedule out.
I'm sorry?
We asked for the schedule. How come we don't get that schedule?
We can give you the schedule. There's no reason not to give you the schedule.
We've asked for things. We're not getting them.
Okay, I just offered to have you come in, sit with Mr. D'Onisio, and go through all of the information that we have. Schedule is in there too.
Okay, I'd like the schedule.
Yep. Come on in.
No, I, do I have to come in? I work every day. Can you email it to me?
Yeah, we can email it to you.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else? Okay, we'll close up tonight's meeting. Our next meeting is Tuesday, the twenty-fifth of November. We have a confidential session at seven o'clock and a public meeting at eight. Night. Good night.